Right on time, Colonel Proud. Not a problem at all.
All right. Apologize for being late. Anyway, today we are welcoming back our commander of Naval Air Station Oceana for an annual update, and so I would like to turn this over to Captain Chad Vinnie Vinsale. Vinnie, thanks for being here today.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for inviting me to come out and have the opportunity to talk to you. I know we do this annually, but I'm more than willing, anytime you guys want, I'll come out and kind of give you an update on what's going on. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on the election. So fantastic. So we'll click through our slides here in a minute. For those of you that I haven't met, Captain Chad Vinsale, I'm a local here from Virginia Beach, went to Kempsville High School. So I think it's, I feel like I won the lottery, the fact that I'm back at Oceana. So just amazing. So we've got here just kind of opening slides, and I'll take about 15 minutes of your time. I don't want to take too much. And I'll talk through some things, but please feel free to stop me and ask questions anytime. This year, we're celebrating the 75th anniversary of Oceana, so we're kind of on the down slope of that as we head into 2019. And I'll talk about some of those events that we celebrated and had some great partnership with the city as we did that. All right. Where am I aiming this thing? Oh, other way. All right. So just a couple of the numbers out of Oceana. Our workforce slight increased, about 1,000 folks over last year, but that's not due to any new commands or anything like that. It's really just to the Navy's finally starting to man the squadrons and the tenant commands like we should have been manned. So we've been undermanned, averaging about 80% forever, and we're finally starting to ramp up that manning. So that's kind of where that increase in numbers, no real increase in missions, but that's where that comes from. As the CO of Oceana, I also own Dam Neck Annex and Fentress, just for your awareness as well. But I'll talk mostly about Oceana today. So we've maintained steady there, 15 fleet squadrons. We currently have four F-18 Charlie squadrons. The rest are F-18 ENF Super Hornets. Those Charlie squadrons, we call Legacy Hornets. They're all in the process of transitioning to the Super Hornet now. So we've done the environmental impact studies and all that kind of stuff. No real impact to the city or anything. You probably wouldn't even notice the difference. They look fairly similar. Kind of takes a trained eye to tell the difference. But fairly shortly, within the next two years, Oceana will be completely Super Hornet base. Sometimes I get questions about the F-35. There has been no decision about the F-35 coming to Oceana, so if you hear about that, right now they're all going out to Lemoore, California, on the West Coast. It would be years before that happened here. We'd have to do environmental impact statements and all that kind of stuff, and we haven't done, even started that process yet. So I don't anticipate in the foreseeable future, F-35 coming to Oceana. We do have one fleet replacement squadron, aggressor squadron, and then we have a fleet logistics squadron, which is basically four 737s that are based out of there. And that's to fly, when we do, the air, when the squadrons do detachments down to Key West to train, or they go out to California to train, the pilots fly the jets out. But to get the maintainers out there, we have basically, instead of having to go to Norfolk and fly international, or, you know, out of Norfolk International, they can fly out of our stuff. Four of those airplanes, so have anywhere around 330 kind of fluctuates. F-18 Super Hornets is what we have at Oceana. Tower operations, I don't, the 2018 numbers are fairly similar, and that number's a little bit misleading there. It says, you know, 64,000, but read that as a takeoff and a landing. Those are two operations. So it's about 32,000 flights is kind of what we're looking at, but still very, very busy. As you guys can tell, anybody that lives around Oceana, we're flying all the time. And then the good part for Virginia Beach is that our annual payroll and money that we put into the local economy is over a billion dollars coming out of Oceana. So we're happy to be your neighbors, and I know you're happy to have us here. So it's a great relationship. Just a couple of highlights from this past year I wanted to talk about, something kind of unique. In April and May of this past year, we had the, some French Rafales come over and fly out of Oceana. So this was kind of a unique opportunity, they came over and did some training with one of the air wing squadrons. The Charles de Gaulle, which is the French aircraft carrier, was in the shipyard, and so in order for their pilots to maintain their carrier qualifications, they use the same systems that we do. They came over and trained with one of our air wings, and then went out on the George H.W. Bush and did some carrier qualifications out there. They were here for about six weeks. Some of them lived on base, but most of them were living out at the oceanfront area, staying in the hotels, you know, using the restaurants and everything else. So I think it was a good boon economically for Virginia Beach, and it was a great kind of relationship with one of our NATO partners, and something that we strengthened up. And then I mentioned it at the beginning of the brief, this year was the 75th anniversary of Oceana. And so one of the major events, we had the Navy League, Virginia Beach sponsored a Naval Aviation Symposium at the convention center, and then we also had a gala that evening. I know quite a few of you were there, so thank you for coming to that. It was a fantastic event. I talked to Mary Ellen Baldwin at Navy League, and she's interested in maybe making that Naval Aviation Symposium an annual event, so something she's considering. So we'll look into that. I think it'd be kind of neat, bring some business down to the oceanfront down there. We also, the theme of the airshow this year was the 75th anniversary. We had two jet teams, the Blue Angels and the Canadian Snowbirds, which was kind of neat. They hadn't been here in quite a while. And we broke the attendance, one day attendance record on Saturday, so the previous attendance record was 180,000 people. We had over 200,000 on Saturday, so fantastic. I know quite a few of you were out there for that event as well. So the CO Chalet is the place to see that thing. So I will make sure you get those invitations again next year. But my favorite, honestly, my favorite part of the whole airshow is the, it used to be the practice airshow on Friday, and now we've kind of turned it into the STEM Day, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. It's a chance where we get to reach out to all of the fifth grade students in Virginia Beach, 5,500 kids and about 1,200 chaperones. So we're looking at about 170 to 180 buses come in for about a four-hour period. And then we have a bunch of different, from Office of Naval Research to Dominion Virginia Power, to a whole bunch of different local universities, bring STEM displays. I know the Virginia Beach school system, the high schools, have their STEM robotics clubs and stuff come out, and the kids get hands-on experience playing with those things. And it's just a fantastic event. And like I said, that's my favorite part of the airshow, is going around on Friday and seeing the kids and just the smiles on their faces, you know? It's just fantastic. And this year, we opened it up a little bit more to Chesapeake. They brought all their Title I schools out in the morning, so we had about 600 students from Chesapeake come out, too, some kids that normally wouldn't get to see the airshow. So that was, that was a really good event for us. And so we've had a fantastic relationship with Dr. Spence and his team at the school. Some other things that we're working on, PFAS, and I'm not a chemist, so I'm going to say it's called per and polyfluoral acetylene substances. What is PFAS? So PFAS is a chemical that was found, it's found in a lot of commercial stuff, like the old, you know, non-stick pans and stuff like that, but in large volumes, it was put in firefighting foam in the 80s and 90s. And so down at Fentress, and then at places where we've had airplane crashes around Virginia Beach, or where the firefighters have trained, some of that PFAS has gotten in and contaminated some of the groundwater. It doesn't really have major effects in Virginia Beach, because most of the people in Virginia Beach, businesses and private residences are on city water. Down in Chesapeake is a little bit different. Around Fentress, we did a lot of firefighting down there, so it seeped into the groundwater. And then we found six properties outside of the base down there, six wells, four properties, where we're providing bottled water for them. We've done about a bunch of wells on Oceana to test where does the water flow go? And it basically travels kind of northeast out of the base. So we've tested a few properties outside of Oceana for the PFAS in the water, to see if it's above what's called the EPA's Lifetime Health Advisory, which is 70 parts per trillion. I know I'm getting kind of into the weeds down here. But so on our first round of testing, there aren't many, like I said, properties around Oceana that are on well water, but in our second round of testing, we found one business kind of right out off of Potter's Road that tested above that 70 parts per trillion. Now, they don't use that water for drinking, they just use it kind of for cleaning. It's an auto shop, so we're providing them well water, or, I'm sorry, bottled water, just in case, you know? And that's kind of what the Navy's doing. What we've done in Chesapeake is, we've been providing those for residents down there, bottled water, for a couple of years, and now we're looking at what's the long-term solution. And what the Navy's doing in Chesapeake is, our preferred course of action is, we're going to build a pipeline of city water, which currently doesn't exist, down Mount Pleasant Road, and then pay to connect those residences to that. So in Virginia Beach, if we start to find areas that are above that Lifetime Health Advisory, and they're on well water, whether it's business or they're drinking it, then I anticipate that's probably what the Navy's going to do, is pay. It's much easier in Virginia Beach to connect to the city water, because all the infrastructure's there. We'll just pay that connection fee, and kind of from the, from the business to that. But in Chesapeake, we're having to build the whole pipeline, is what we're doing. Several million dollar project, but in the long term, I think the return on investment's probably the better way we'll do that. Any questions on that? Kind of different thing. Other initiatives, drone awareness, and that's, that's a big one for us. We do a anti, you know, not anti-drone, but a drone awareness campaign every year before the airshow, because we're just worried about all those jets flying low and doing those kind of things. I will tell you, as that commander of Oceana, I am not concerned about drones doing terrorist things or nefarious activities coming onto the base. That's not my concern. My concern is, if you remember, the United Airlines flight out of New York that took the two geese down the engines and then had to land in the water, so you can imagine what a battery would do, you know, a battery that's in a drone into an F-18 engine and what that would do. So it could be catastrophic. So my concern is airplane collisions with drones. And where do I see that? You know, like I said, I'm not concerned about terrorists. I'm concerned about the hobbyist that's flying one out of their house in Virginia Beach and doesn't know, or the tourist that comes down to Virginia Beach in the summertime, and they want to take some awesome pictures, you know, of their vacation in Virginia Beach. And we've actually, Johnny Lotterback, who's my community planning liaison officer, has found some video, you know, online of people, you know, taking, it's beautiful footage of the boardwalk at night in the summertime, but the, you know, from my pilot's eye, I'm like, that's about 1,500 feet, which is right where the Hornets come in, you know? So it scares me to death that that's going to be happening. So we've got a great relationship with the city, working with them for a, working with you guys for a public awareness campaign. They built a video, and it's going to run on all the hotel TVs and stuff down in Virginia Beach. So I think that, that's really good. And the big thing's just awareness, you know? I think people are just unaware, they don't think about it, you know, that, hey, you know, at their local place, they're not seeing the jets flying around.
Excuse me, John.
Yeah, I know, I spoke with John about it, but, and I know that we've done some outreach to the hotel association, but when you all were having the problems with the laser pointers, you know, we were pretty aggressive about making sure they got put in the rooms.
Yep.
And, you know, if you're not from this area, you're not making, this is in any way an issue in this type of stuff you've got to do.
No, yeah, appreciate that.
I will circle back to that, but I mean, we actually worked with BCF to come up with a piece that goes in a lot of the hotel rooms in the in-room guest directories to, you know, let people know what the.
Yeah, because that's a big thing, too. You get blinded by lasers coming in, you know, and people don't think about it, but it has a great impact.
This is how you're going to do it, is everybody starts getting ready to refresh in the spring for all the material they've got in the room? So we'll talk about that, but we'll see if we can work up something.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. The other one is the North Landing Bridge down kind of off of Center Village, come down. The Army Corps of Engineers is looking to replace that. So that's a factor for us for two reasons, because I will let you guys know in this room that our fuel for Oceana comes in, barges come through there, and there's, you know, if you go over that little bridge and you look off to the left and you see the big fuel thing, that's Oceana's fuel. And that's how we get our fuel, to avoid driving trucks all through the city. So we'll just keep that between us, all right? I'll let you know, all right? Okay.
1,000 people that are watching.
But, what's that?
And the 400,000 people.
Okay, yeah, okay, great. So I'm glad I said that. But the other piece is, it's down at Fentress, that's very close to Fentress. So we were just concerned about what type of bridge are they going to put in? Something big that comes over, is it going to affect our flight patterns if they do a drawbridge and it goes up? How high is it going to be? So we're working with the Corps of Engineers, so that shouldn't be, shouldn't be a factor for us. I think it's not going to be an issue, but we're working with them. All right. Encroachment management, obviously, this is a big issue at Oceana, and it has been since, you know, 2005. But our relationship with the city and the state has been fantastic on managing the encroachment. So, you know, with all the different, the joint review process, the O-Luck, working the APZ-1, and the encroachment partnering has, has been fantastic. I think the latest iteration of that, that kind of shows that the, the relationship that we have and the success that we've had between the Navy and the city is what we call the inter facility, traffic area, which basically is the area between Oceana. As we fly down to Fentress, it's still fairly rural down there, and we want to keep it that way, just for the noise contours. And so partners, partnering with the city, we've done a great job, just about completed purchasing all the available property that's down there to maintain kind of that rural footprint down there to decrease the encroachment and prevent it from getting anywhere. So I think that, that's a fantastic.
Excuse me, Captain, Ms. Henley.
Well, I know when the ITA was first established, everybody thought, you know, that was the end of the world, but I think it's really turned out to be a great partnership and great relationship. A lot of good things are able to happen because of that property that we purchased, and I'm happy.
I agree. You're happy and we're happy, so I think that's great. I think that's fantastic, very, another success story in the partnership that we've built to counter the encroachment around here. And so, you know, I know she's not here, but Michelle Chaplow from O-Luck is, I know she's leaving the city, but she's just been a fantastic partner for us. We've had a great relationship with her, so I just wanted to kind of give her a shout out in front of the crowd and wish her the best of luck. So she's, she's just been fantastic. Looking ahead, so this is a little bit different, and kind of a new thing, and I was, I was talking to some of the folks out in the corridors earlier. So the Navy has kind of started looking at, what are our core missions and what are our non-core missions? And our core missions, like what I see at Oceana, is I've got hangars, I've got runways, I've got to fly and do those kind of things. Some of the other things are not my core missions, but I still dedicate a lot of money to that, and whether that's, I have a thing called the Navy Gateway Inn and Suites, which is basically hotels on the base that, where people, if they're coming in, detachments and do those kind of things, they stay. I have barracks, which is kind of like dorm rooms, if you think about from your college days, that I run. But a lot of that infrastructure is running down, and it's falling apart, and it's, it's really in dire need of some help. And I dedicate a lot of my resources to maintaining, you know, my bowling alleys, my golf course, the chapels, my dining facilities, and all those kind of things. So the Navy's kind of thinking outside the box here a little bit, kind of pushing in a new way. And I just had a, we had a meeting with our three-star admiral up in Williamsburg last week, talking about it, and she said, this is the most permissive she's ever seen it, where maybe we can start privatizing some of those things. And then maybe a combination of, we have private companies come in and build the barracks on the base, and they run it, and we lease the property to them, to, maybe I shut the bowling alley, because if you go outside of Oceana, there's several bowling alleys right out there, and I don't need them. Or, you know, I've got gym facilities on the base, and I have to maintain all those things, and it's good for fitness, but maybe there's, we have a partnership with a gym out in town, and now I don't have to dedicate the resources to do that. Because right, I will tell you, with my limited resources, I focus on the operational things, those core missions, you know, the hangars, the simulators, the runways, all those kind of things. And I don't have the money to maintain the things the, the way I should. And another piece of this is called an intergovernmental service agreement. And so I've talked to the city manager, and our staffs are meeting on Thursday to get together and talk about some options. And what is this? These are options where I have authority up to about $100,000 per project as the base CO to use economies of scale. So the city has lawn mowers, and I contract lawn mowers. Well, maybe if I, the city and I go in together on contracting lawn mowers, I can get mine cut cheaper, or my ditch maintenance, or snow removal, or repaving my roads. So we're going to take a look at some of those options this week, kind of at the worker level, lower staff level, and kind of figure out what are some options, so we can build some relationships, and then do some, yes, we can, you know, work on some of those things with the city. And I think, you know, that way, you know, the city's getting some money out of it, and then I'm getting maybe better service than I would have before, or at a cheaper price, is what we're looking at. So there's a lot of pressure from the higher Navy echelon to reach out and privatize some of those things, as we talked about, and to do some of those intergovernmental service agreements. And so I may be reaching out to some of you, and then I know I'm going to try and talk to the members of the chamber, too, and see if we can work some of those things. Because, you know, as a Navy professional, I've been in the Navy 25 years, I'm not a business person. So how can we make those things attractive to the business community, you know, so it's a win-win? It's kind of what I want to do, and so we'll look out and do those kind of things. Wrong way. All right, and that's just a cool picture from the airshow. So really, that, you know, that's about 20 minutes of your time. I'm open to any questions that you have.
I just want to, I think, thank you not only on behalf of our government, our workers, but everybody that lives in Virginia Beach. I can't emphasize enough what friends and partners we have been, and how much we value you, not only in terms of what you do for national defense, but just being our friends and neighbors and being in our community. A lot of your retirees live, you know, chose to continue to live in Virginia Beach. And just let me say going forward, you know, I think I can speak confidently that any type of further collaboration, you know, in, you know, inter services and what we can do to help each other would definitely be welcomed.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? On behalf of a grateful city, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Guys, have a good day.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. John.
Thanks, Dave.
Vinnie, thanks a lot.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right, members of council, we're going to ask Assistant City Attorney Debbie Bright to come forward. We've been working on this for quite some time, to have a discussion and a briefing for you all on wireless communications facilities master license agreement.
Very good.
And some conversation about what is 5G and what might it mean to the city of Virginia Beach? And we've got some friends from Verizon here with us, sitting over underneath the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, Mayor Dyer, members of council. Let's see if we can figure out, how do I do this? Hmm? How do I do that?
I'd be happy to sit over there and learn.
Okay, so thank you very much for allowing us to come and talk to you today, and really just a brief overview of what we've been doing, and also something that we wanted to let you know about for next week. It will be on your agenda next week. So let's see, let's see if we can get all this up. So in 2017 and 2018, as most of you already know, there was a lot of activity in the General Assembly with regard to small cells, which are not necessarily small in size, but small in range. And basically, the General Assembly came up with three different options for providers and infrastructure providers to really densify their networks, getting ready for 5G. As most of you know, 5G is coming, but in order for the antennas and all of the infrastructure to be ready for it, there, there needs to be more, on that note, yeah, 4G. There needs to be, there needs to be more antennas and also closer to the users. So basically, the three options were, and these are already in place. Option one, the infrastructure provider or provider can attach their antenna to an existing structure, such as a Dominion pole or a Verizon pole, and this they can already do by statute. You need to have permission from the owner, provide notice to the locality, and then we have to approve it or disapprove it within 60 days. We charge the maximum, which is $250 for a permit, and no right-of-way fee is allowed. And as of right now, we've probably permitted about 40 to 50 under option one. And option two, if there is no existing structure, a Dominion structure or a Dominion pole, a Verizon pole, they are allowed to build their own structure. That is per an agreement, which we do through our franchise agreements. It has to be a minimum of 25 years. There's no permit fee caps or anything like that, but we charge our normal permitting fees. So those two are already in existence. What we've come to, we've been working on with our city manager and also the providers is option three. The Virginia Code allowed for attachment to government-owned structures, which wasn't mandatory, but you'll see in the next few slides why we've put this before you. So government-owned structures means any of our, for us, we do own several of our light poles. Dominion owns many of them, but we're, we're owning more and more of those. Also, traffic control signals, and basically, any structure that the government, that we may own. There are certain things that under this code section, we would have to do if we decide to allow them on our poles. And, I'll tell you that, it's coming up. So in addition to this, that was our state code. Now, there's 20 states right now that have adopted small cell regulations in the past two years. The FCC came up this past September with a report in order, which was published in the Federal Register on October 15th, meaning that it will become effective January 14th, 2009. So in addition to the 20 states, that R being one of them, that have already adopted these regulations, there will be more regulations on top of those that will come from the federal level. And to the extent that one is more restrictive than the other, the FCC regulations can preempt ours. For our purposes, the main thing is, the Virginia regulations are already pretty stringent enough, but for our purposes, the $270 per pole is the amount that has been established as a safe harbor by the FCC. So if we were to charge any more than $270 per year per pole, we would have to have the burden of proof of proving that it costs us more than that in order to have the provider attached to our, our poles. And then there's some zoning application fees in there, but we already are, are under the maximum for those. There have been some challenges to this FCC order, but as of right now, nothing has been stayed, or it probably will go through. Okay, so the options one and two that I showed you earlier, these companies, throughout the past two years, you've already given them franchises to, to do options one and two, which would be Selco Partnership, Verizon Wireless, AT&amp;T Mobility, Mobility, which is an infrastructure provider mainly for Sprint, Cox Wireless Access, although they applied for their franchise, they have not put up any small cells yet, and Crown Castle also has not put up any in our rights of way. All of these have put up some on private property, which is totally outside of, of our realm of this, but they've been allowed to do that. So two companies right now, Selco Partnership, Verizon Wireless, and AT&amp;T Mobility, New Singular, have asked to be able to do option three, which is to attach to our city-owned structures. So here's a typical scenario, what would happen. Now, this is an actual, this is a mobility site on Rosemont and Buckner. This was a Dominion pole. They weren't able to negotiate with Dominion to put anything on that structure, so they ended up doing option two and putting their own structure right next to it. What our option, option three, would do, would then give them another opportunity to say, if there was a city-owned structure in, within that area, they would attach to that instead. Now, there's always going to be places where there aren't, but it just gives one more option. In, in our case, we at least have more leverage to, we don't have a lot of leverage to tell them what it looks, what it should look like, or where it should go, but if we have any structure within a certain area, we can request that they go on that structure as opposed to building their own.
Excuse me, Jim has a question.
Yes, sir.
So in this example, Dominion owns, owns a light pole?
Correct.
Okay, and they, they did not, they couldn't work something out? Is there any method that we have? Because, I mean, I get the necessity for having that, but it's kind of ugly to have a, a pole next to it. If there's not a city structure nearby, is there any kind of influence we have with Dominion to, to encourage them, or any of these private utilities, to encourage them to, to work with these providers?
Not really.
Like through franchise agreements or anything?
Not, we, we can, we can request it, and we have a pretty good relationship with, with all of them, but in the end, I can tell you that this infrastructure provider, which is Mobility, has been known around the country for doing things like this, and not necessarily, going through their path of least resistance, and not necessarily working with, with anyone. And I know others may agree with me.
Okay, Ms. Henley, do you have a question?
What would be an example of some city structures that they might be able to use?
We do have city light poles that we own, the LED light poles along Princess Anne, and there's several other places at the oceanfront, and then also traffic signals. Now, the oceanfront, we also have the very large, the tall camera poles, the police camera poles. They would be able to, and there are some simulations that Verizon has provided to us of how they would utilize those. There is a need for coverage at the oceanfront, and we really don't want our aesthetics at the oceanfront or something we take great pride in. And so that would be something where we'd have a little more. pride in. And so, that would be something where we'd have a little more leverage to work with them on making it more aesthetically pleasing.
John.
While we're talking about the oceanfront, we, I know we're talking about the vertical components of that, but we're really starting to run into a problem where the Green Belt, which is the area between the hotels and the boardwalk, is, it is the path of least resistance in terms of running utilities. And what we're finding is that we're adding these utilities, and they're adding, they're creating the boxes for access. And so, we have a lot less grass and a lot more covers for these access boxes. And so, I know that, you know, we're trying to work through some type of a policy to be able to prevent that because it's really proliferating itself, and there are different colors and what have you. If we're going to be adding additional structure, I'm certainly for using the poles that we have, but we also need to be mindful of what it is that we're doing in the ground in that, in that public right-of-way that's being converted from grass to manhole covers.
Yes, absolutely.
Something to the mind as we're coming through.
We have had a few of the, because these all require fiber in the ground. They don't just appear there. They all have to have backhaul somewhere, which is a whole nother issue. But we are working with the planning department and to come up with some guidelines to the extent that we can. But even in the Green Belt area, we had recently, one of the fiber companies, and we were able to reroute them around onto city property as opposed to going in the greenway there.
Anything we need to prevent it because it's bad.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously.
Right. And we do have, all of these, even if we do agree to these master licensing agreements, all of these will still have to go through the permitting process. So, we still have kind of a second bite of the apple, and we have to use our permitting process that way.
But don't, we're balancing, you know, agency for the technology.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. But there has to be a way for us to both be happy with doing it that way.
With conduits or whatever.
Mm-hmm, whenever possible.
John, did you have a question?
Yeah, city property.
Yes.
City property defined as city and school property or city-only property?
City-only property.
So, are people also pursuing a similar master agreement with the school board?
No, the school property wouldn't, not at this point, but the school property, as far as the Virginia code, is not part of city-owned structures. So, that would --
How about the federal regulations?
No. So, it's considered proprietary property.
Oh, interesting.
And so, but that's okay, because they're also looking and working with Tony Arnold to go whenever possible on school-owned property. And the good thing about that is schools doesn't have the fee caps either. So, schools can, of course, that's good for us, probably bad for the providers. But at any point, schools can, they can also go on school property.
Right, thank you very much.
Good. Shannon?
Can you get that on screen?
Sure.
On that particular pole, is all, all four of those, which is the cell structure? So, the cell structure is on the top, the antenna. Okay, that does, if this were a city-owned pole, that would go on the top. And then, these are different boxes, that's the meter, of course. And then, these are different boxes that are needed. I can let Verizon speak to those and what's needed on each individual pole. But for the most part, it's not just the antenna. There's other structures that are needed with them there, too. There will be those multiple components on each one.
Mm-hmm. And not necessarily looking like that. Some of them are smaller, and they, to the extent possible, they are screening them, making them as stealth as possible.
You were saying earlier that we couldn't dictate or indicate what we wanted them to look like, so to speak. If there are poles and we're giving them permission to put them there, how are we not able to at least say we want them to be?
So, in that case, we have a little bit more leeway, because it is on our poles. We don't really have any leeway when it's on a third-party pole, such as Dominion pole. If there is no other option for them but to be on the city-owned pole, we have less leverage. So, they can always go either way. But for the city-owned poles and for this master license agreement, we've talked to both AT&amp;T and Verizon, and they've all agreed that we will come up with some kind of standards and aesthetics.
I think the most frustrating part of this is what you're looking at here. This has been hard for me and my staff to get over. But because of what the FCC has done and the Dillon State that we live in, control of your right-of-way is somewhat limited, to say the least. I think, I think what we're looking at here is, we're looking at replacing this picture with this, as Deborah said, being on top of here. And if they need two boxes, then they're mounted here, and that gets mounted there, and this gets eliminated. And there are other, there are, let me tell you, we've had several meetings with Verizon. They've brought some stealth efforts to try to blend in. I think they want to be good partners with us. We spent a lot of time trying to underground all the crazy stuff that, that's, you know, all the distribution lines and all the communications cables. We go spend all that money to underground all that visual clutter, and then the General Assembly authorizes that, those poles that go back up into that right-of-way. We want to try to keep it as less distracting as possible and still provide the technology so that our citizens, visitors, and businesses have that 5G connectivity. So, it's a tough, tough compromise we're here, but I'm very pleased with the way both Verizon and AT&amp;T are working with us to try to, try to take away this from happening and avoid that. So, I think, I think Debbie's hitting the nail on the head. It's a collaborative spirit and that they care about our city as much as we do and work with us to do that.
And thank you. Mrs. Henley?
I'm sure they know what they're doing, but those boxes look like they're mighty low and susceptible to mischief. I guess it's okay. Somebody else came up with that idea.
Miss Henley, I think that's probably a six-foot privacy fence.
That's probably about 10 to 12 feet up.
That's probably 12 feet up there.
Another one is low.
This is a meter. This is an electrical meter. They got to read.
We don't have any liability or anything if they go on our poles and anything, word occurs.
We are, no, we're requiring bonding, we're requiring letters of credit, we're requiring insurance, and hold harmless agreements. They're completely liable.
And engineer certification.
And engineer certification and --
Compromises.
They mess with the meter, they'll still be there when you get there.
And I'll mention one more thing. Most of our light poles are, the ones that we do own, our LED light poles, are not able to hold that as they are right now. So, they will all have to be swapped out. So, when they come to us and say, I would like to be on that pole, there's a very good chance that they will have to put up a brand-new pole. And at that point, we'll try to get them to do everything they can internally so that it may be a thicker pole, but all of these things are, to the extent possible, will be on the inside. So, it will give us another opportunity, and then they would have to pay for the entire pole, and we would get a brand-new pole out of it. There are places in the city where we could use to replace some of our poles. So, it might be a good win-win. And then, lastly, what we'll be asking you for next week is to approve a master license agreement with Verizon and AT&amp;T. It will be a formal bid opening. Because it was longer than five years, it's non-exclusive, but we do have to do a formal bid opening. So, I'll have a nice script for you to read. And anyone else that wants to come at that point, I don't believe we've had anybody else sprint, or any T-Mobile or anyone asking, but they will be getting a master license agreement. Again, as I said, though, that's not the end-all. They still have to go through the regular permitting process as you would with any other thing.
Jessica.
Just out of theory, this wouldn't be exclusive, though. If T-Mobile or somebody wanted to come and add to this, they could then, they would just apply for their own master license agreement.
Absolutely. It's non-exclusive, and so, we would give a license agreement to anybody who, we'd have to.
Like to do it.
Anybody who'd like to. What we aren't going to allow them to do is to kind of tag poles throughout the city and say, that's mine, that's mine, that's mine. What we're requiring is that they, once they apply for a pole and are permitted for a pole, they have to put the equipment on it, and it has to be operational within six months, because otherwise, we could end up with some pole grabs.
So that they're not, they're not, yeah, I got it. Thank you.
No, we want the technology. We don't want them to just hold open poles for years.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't exclusive.
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions?
Any questions at all? John?
Just an observation. This is the technology that allows people to do streaming video, and it's competition for cable for TV services. So, people nowadays who look at cable or think they only have two choices, this will increase the competition of sources because 5G gives you the bandwidth to do video right to your TV without a cable.
Great. Now, this is an exciting, well-needed initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah.
You're very welcome.
Associate City Attorney Deborah Bryant. So, members of council, Deputy City Manager Ron Williams will now be providing us a briefing on the operating agreement, the comprehensive operating agreement for our, our sports center that is currently in construction.
Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. This is the culmination of work that really began in July of 2017. As you recall, that when we did the RFP through the PPA process for the design, build, and operation of the sports center, that eventually, we came to the conclusion of, number one, having a design-build comprehensive agreement, and that work is underway. We're under construction. Site plan is, is right at the end of approval, and you'll start to see parking lot and vertical construction start over the next 60 days. The second part was to then negotiate a agreement for the operation. The direction that you gave us, the team, when we did that RFP, was that there was a preference for a private operator for the facility. There were three competing teams that we had, and also prior to that work, prior to the release of the work, we did some benchmarking of different facilities, particularly in the mid-Atlantic. Our main competition, newer facilities that had been built. And it gave us one particular takeaway, and that was, when you're building a facility, make sure that you have an operator at the table that understands how the business works and how it, what the profit areas are for the operation, how they function, and then what are the emerging markets for the facility. And so, we've had that benefit through an interim agreement with Eastern Sports Management, who was at the table with us for the design that we have now agreed to in the design-build. This is the continuance of that with a comprehensive agreement to establish a long-term relationship with Eastern Sports Management, their subsidiary, which is ESM VB LLC from Eastern Sports Management. The term that, this was posted and provided to you on November 2nd, posted for public review, which is a requirement of PPEA, that it be posted for 30-day public viewing prior to the manager executing the agreement. This is a 10-year lease term with two five-year extensions that are authorized. I'm going to walk you through these summary of terms here, and then also highlight some of the exhibits that do exist to this point, based on the, on the work that's been done in the design of the facility. This falls under the form of qualified management agreement, and perhaps we'll come back to that with some questions and have Dana Harmeyer, who was a part of the negotiation and technical team. We also had Taylor Adams, who is on leave today. He was part of our, our technical team, and Brad Van Damland. So, we'll, we'll share on some of the answers when you have questions or further insight. You may recall, in the CIP, that's currently adopted, and originally, as we went into this negotiation, that we, we knew that there was, there was a public-private investment here. We were anticipating that would be upwards of $2 million invested by the private operator. As we've gotten into design and understanding of the type of pro forma and events that we want to have, that budget has grown by the private operator to an estimated 4.2 million. And I've got a slide here to walk us through The summary of terms. Some of these are very specific, one, to our lessons learned, and two, understanding where does this fit as far as our product and our goal for the year-round destination, and how does it complement the convention center. So, number one, the manager will be the sole operator of the facility, but the city's CVB sports marketing staff, who will be a team member with the operator, will have offices in the facility as well. Right now, they're in temporary space in the pavilion office building where our CVB staff is. We've had some adjustments and changes in growth in staff, and so, we are currently leasing a smaller office that they're in, but in anticipation of the build-out space that you saw as we had the designs and the fly-through a couple of months ago. The operation of the facility will be focused on tournaments, track meets, and other sports-related events that drive out-of-town visitation and provide positive economic impact for the city. One of the underscores on this one is that while there are other type of facilities that may have, let's say, birthday parties or beer events, we really want that this is a sports-focused facility for the out-of-town visitors, but also for local residents that get to participate in some of the activities that we'll describe here as well. The manager will develop an operating budget that the facility, for the facility, and it's subject to approval by the city.
[laughing]
And that the, that the operator will be compensated through a fixed management fee and a variable incentive fee. This is another key point. We, in one scenario, if we, we had a different type of bonding for the facility, it may be a lease scenario, or we may just pay a management fee for someone to operate it. But we wanted a blend of a bottom, basic fee to cover overhead and some basic expenses, but a pay-for-performance incentive so that the types of events that we want to see that have the greatest fiscal impact, but also robust operations and revenues coming out of the facility. And I'll give you a glimpse of what we see in the pro forma. What does that mean for, for a direct return back to the city? I'll show you that here in a minute. This is a key term that we started out with, a concept long before we began negotiations, and that is that the city's CVB sports marketing division will have a booking policy, and they book tournaments nine months out. So, for example, December 1st, we're looking at that the city's CVB marketing staff would have, anytime if they were looking upwards to an event, for example, in September, that they would have control in the calendar. After that, when you lock into just below nine months out, the operator actually has control in the calendar. But we have the opportunity and the language of the comprehensive agreement so that we can jointly decide what the best impact of an event might be if we have somebody that comes within the nine months, or if there are openings on the calendar. And so, it's definitely a joint decision on that. As part of the startup budget, the manager is going to outfit the facility with furniture, fixture, and equipment as I described. And basically, this is the type of equipment that's not bolted down. So, as we described in the design for you a couple of months ago, where all of the goals and the nets for basketball and volleyball are going to be suspended from the ceiling, that's part of the construction of the building. But other portable goals, or bleachers, or even the track equipment, the operator is actually going to purchase those. If by chance we happen to terminate the contract with the operator before the initial 10-year period, there is an opportunity for those unamortized costs to be returned back to the operator. We will hold and control an operating reserve and a capital reserve. The operating reserve is for, you know, the unplanned events, such as a weather event or major, you know, major event that shuts down the building for some time and you're not able to operate that. So, we want to make sure we build that reserve in order to carry forward on some of the support for that. But then also, this is a standard that we want to establish that we haven't traditionally done here, and that is, when we have a new facility, that we actually build in a capital reserve so we can have the recapitalization and investment for maintenance and ongoing upgrades. So, we will establish that standard here. The manager will also make quarterly payments to the city above the operating expenses, which include his management incentive fees. And then, the city will retain control for approval of sponsorship and naming rights of the facility, and all of the funds received from this, net of direct expenses, will go to the capital reserve. So, a couple scenarios. For example, those direct expenses, if you're going to do a sign package for a major corporation for the facility, that could run anywhere from $20,000 to $100,000 for that sign package. So, that's the direct costs associated with that. We would net that out, and then, then the, the direct naming right revenue would go to the capital reserve. We expect that a facility of this size could, you know, could fetch a seven-figure type of naming right opportunity. The sponsorships, some of the interiors, banners, clings on the windows, cups, and things of that nature, that you might see some logo. And so, those decisions, the city will retain control of that, but will work with the operator as the operator sees opportunities. You did not have in your package, but we have posted online. You did not have in your package, but we have posted online and anybody that would like a hard copy. This is Exhibit A. This is the operator's business plan and operations manual. It will continue to be edited as we understand more about the specificity of the equipment, but it is a good read in understanding how they market, how they operate, what the products are as far as what they're looking for bookings. It's their expenses, the specific type of staff that you'll see there, and then also their emergency operations plan. So, it's a good understanding and try to understand what they will be doing and how they will operate on a day-to-day basis. The 4.2 million I mentioned, these are the type of equipment that are being purchased, the IT and sound systems, they're going to outfit the meeting rooms, and then, as I mentioned, a significant amount of kitchen, janitorial, eating, and food service, and sports equipment, the track equipment, for example. There is an area, you see a food truck on there, there's an area outside that actually has a pad, a concrete pad made for that, to activate that plaza. That would be an extension of the food service that's on the inside, and will offer also a complimentary opportunity for anybody that's in the private sector that wants to join in, where we have an area that they're posted. This is the draft pro forma. This is Exhibit C for the first five years. We had a specific question over the weekend about the sponsorship of the gross revenues. These are the level of revenues that we might receive from sponsorship that does not include naming rights. But what you see here, the net income, first year, we need to get to stabilization, but once it starts to stabilize and we actually build the tournaments that are in there and grow to that 60-plus tournaments a year, then you'll see that there is a net return to the city, and again, that we're advocating that we put that into a capital reserve fund for those monies.
And these are direct, not...
That's right. These are direct.
They don't count indirect.
Yeah, the indirect is really where we get the activity of the hotel room nights, you know. So, it's estimated that indirect, it's about 4 million. But these are the direct, just from the operation. It's similar to the convention center in that you, that the revenues are on plowback in to support the operation. The other exhibits to the agreement, one of which is a, it is a maintenance plan, but because we haven't determined all the equipment, or the HVAC, for example, and things of that nature, we still have work to do on the maintenance plan. There's also a quarterly report form that they have to provide us an understanding of how they're inspecting equipment and their activities, and then they will have to work through our SWAM requirements as well. And so, those are the exhibits, three of which are online right now for review, and we'll continue to massage these as we get into better understanding in the startup years. The startup years, and the reason for the management fee ahead of time is that there is marketing, there are systems to be built, there's continued sitting at the table with the design builder, and there's staff to be hired, and that will increase from today all the way up to opening. We want the building to be able to be booked and up and running on day one, and so, we have a two-year lead time on that. Some staff has already been hired by Eastern Sports Management that is at the higher management level, and that will ever increase. And we provided to you email today of a breakdown of some of the detail of those first two years, and we're happy to provide more through the operator as we understand it. This is tentatively scheduled next week for your consideration for approval, and we're happy to take questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Just one.
John.
On Slide 7, just one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is that net of revenues currently being achieved by the convention for businesses that will transfer to this facility?
So, there's six that will transfer, and I don't know that that's been taken into account. It would, we'd have to, we'll come back to you and better understand what delta is there.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Anybody else? John.
I was whispering Shannon over here, and she was really bullish on making this a public-private operating. I think Rosemary was also really high on that. I was candidly a little reluctant to do that, because, I mean, the facility is being built for the tournament play, but I sure am glad that we did it. You know, when we're talking, taking a look at these potential returns that we're going to have to come back and maintain in the facility in the long term, and actually having that better utilization of the asset with a private sector partner, I can't imagine a better situation. And I know our private sector partner has also been instrumental in terms of helping us with a lot of the nuts and bolts of the design of the building to make sure that when it's open, that it's actually fulfilling the needs of the participants. And so, thank you to all of you around this table that were so insistent on us going this path, because I think it's a home run for everybody.
Yeah. Mr. Anderson.
And if I could pile on Mr. Earn's comments, Mr. John Whack is sitting next to the mayor. John goes back in a relationship with you all here in City Council when we first decided to build a fieldhouse next to our sports center. And John was very collaborative in helping you create your assisted, your medically-friendly shelter, where he was able to adapt, putting in a category-two facility, increased the structural supportability of it, allowed us to wire it, accepts us on a moment's notice, and will shut down all his operations if we need to move into emergency operations. And he's been a longtime friend and collaborator here with the city, and he brings a very large organization that has other facilities across the Commonwealth and outside the Commonwealth, and he is able to muster a very large management team. And as this takes hold, he's going to be able to deliver quality tournaments in addition to what Brad's sports marketing team's going to be, and we couldn't ask for a better partner in this.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. And if I could say, I think there's great value of bringing in an experienced operator. You know, we want this thing to be successful, because, once again, we have to make sure that we are generating revenue for the city to help pay for these other bills that we're going to have and obligations going forward. And I really think that this really enhances our success going forward by somebody that knows the market, that knows the operation, that is a proven provider. You know, I think this is going to be a win-win. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much, Ron.
Thanks, Mayor, Councilman.
Thanks, Sean. Okay. So, Carolyn, are you leading out?
We got the day team today of Bill Lanthier and Jimmy McNamara.
All right. So, Bill, you're leading out.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
We have 12 items for the December 11th public hearing. All have been recommended for approval by staff and the planning commission. Jimmy McNamara and I will be tag teaming today. I'll take the first five items, and Jimmy will take the remaining seven. Item one is a request to permit the modification of conditions for the former Stony's farm stand on First Colonial Road. In 2016, a conditional use permit was approved to permit, in addition to the existing farm market building. This approval had a condition requiring installation of permanent ADA-accessible restrooms. However, the building addition was never constructed, and the permanent restrooms were not built. The former tenant has since vacated the property, and the new operator does not intend to expand the building. Based on this, the property owner is seeking to eliminate the requirement to construct permanent indoor ADA-accessible restrooms. Temporary restrooms will continue to be on-site, and there is a condition recommended that ADA accessibility to those restrooms be created, meaning provide pavement for access be installed. Staff is not aware of any opposition to the modification. Item two is a request to permit a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor located in a commercial center on Haygood Road. The tattoo parlor will be limited to providing permanent makeup services, known as microblading, to clients. No exterior changes are proposed to the building or to the existing signage. Again, staff is not aware of any opposition. Item three is a request to permit a conditional use permit for religious use on property located on Witch Duck Road. A new 2,400-square-foot building is proposed for a Buddhist shrine. A maximum of six worshippers are expected at a time, with visits lasting approximately 15 minutes. A deviation is requested to the three-acre lot size for religious use. Also, in order to locate the parking lot behind the building, a deviation to the 15-foot side yard setback is requested, and a slight deviation to the front yard setback is also requested. Staff is not aware of any opposition. Item four is a conditional use permit requested to permit the operation of a childcare education center within the St. Francis Episcopal Church, located at the corner of South Rosemont Road and Kings Point Road. In addition, the applicant is also requesting a modification of the conditional use permit for religious use in order to add signage to the property. The preschool will be limited to approximately 3,000 square feet of classroom space within the existing church. The maximum enrollment will be 60 children between the ages of six weeks and five years. Four staff persons are expected to be employed. The applicant is requesting a permanent sign at the northeast corner of the property nearest the intersection. The preschool also proposes a permanent sign near the intersection. Staff is not aware of any concerns related to the requests. And item five, a street closure for Potomac Street, which is an unimproved right-of-way located on the west side of Independence Boulevard in Town Center, across the street from the Sandler Center, is requested.
On that one, when that comes to us...
Yes.
Could we just get fully good details on the assessments of the property around there in terms of what their tax assessment is per square foot?
Sure.
And what was the evaluation process we used to value that property? Because that real estate in there is fairly expensive, and we should be getting an appropriate per-square-foot cost, and I just want to be confident that that's what's happening.
Sure. Okay. We'll do that. The applicant intends to incorporate this area, which is 9,800 square feet, into the adjacent parcel which it owns, which is undergoing redevelopment. The street closure will allow a building previously approved on that parcel to be reoriented, so that it lies parallel to Independence Boulevard, allowing the building to screen much of the adjacent parking lot from the street. The viewers and the Central Business Core Design Review Committee reviewed this request. Staff is not aware of any opposition.
Good evening, everyone. This is a request for a change in nonconformity. There are currently two single-family dwellings on this lot, which is Zoned R 7.5, and only one single-family dwelling is permitted. The applicant is proposing an upper-level expansion of one of the single-family dwellings to connect to an existing freestanding garage. It's the applicant's intention to maintain the use as a single-family dwelling and not to attempt to create a garage apartment, as the living spaces will now be connected as they are now currently separated. No additional kitchen is proposed or will be permitted. Staff did receive a letter of opposition listing concerns related to the potential use of the property as a short-term rental, but as discussed, this will be connecting the existing freestanding garage to the living space in the single-family dwelling.
So, is that no short-term rental, just a narrative description of feedback, or is that some kind of condition on the property that's binding?
That is not a condition on the property. That is their, listing their intent that they are not going to be using as a short-term rental.
That's an important disclosure, because you might draw a different conclusion from that statement.
Okay.
I think it sounds like it's a condition.
Yeah, it does. It's a...
It is not currently a condition, but yes. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question.
All right. Next, this is a request for a conditional use permit for 175-foot-tall tower behind an existing building on 1,700-square-foot leased area off of Childen Drive near historic Kempsville. Access to the leased area will be provided via 20-foot easement. Two adjacent neighbors did show up at the planning commission public hearing in opposition. They noted potential health and safety concerns due to the tower. Plan commission did vote 10 to 0 to recommend approval. Next is a request for a craft brewery in the 1,600-square-foot end unit within an existing shopping center off of Oceana Boulevard near the commissary. In addition, an open-air market conditional use permit is requested in order to operate a food truck on-site. The brewery will include a 1,200-square-foot tasting room and an outdoor patio area. A condition is recommended... Yes, sir.
Ms. Henley has a question.
Well, you can finish what you're saying.
Okay. A condition is recommended that underscores the requirement that no live outdoor music will be performed on the patio. There is no known Navy easement encumbrances on the site, and there was one speaker in opposition at the planning commission public hearing, and their concerns include lack of proper notification of the adjacent neighborhood, traffic, and public safety concerns. Plan commission did vote 10 to 0 to recommend approval.
Ms. Henley?
What I was going to comment about, and some of you all have also been getting the calls and emails, this is an area that we've had a terrific amount of concern about with traffic, because that's a terrible traffic configuration there. And I'm assuming you've got a good traffic analysis and so forth, but traffic stacks up there terribly, and it's really not a good configuration. I know we were always very careful about what we allowed to go into this area, but it seems to have proliferated to a lot of things that we wouldn't have allowed a few years ago. I hope you've got a good analysis of it.
So, traffic engineering did review this, and the traffic that would be generated with the craft brewery is similar to that that would be anticipated with any other type of community business use that would go into a unit like this. They did not list any specific concerns at that time.
Can I piggyback on that, Barbara, if I could?
Oh, yeah.
Well, traffic patterns might be similar in terms of volume, but times of day and use of that traffic pattern would be different, and I think you have to take that into consideration to just make the statement that in aggregate, it's the same, would be true, but when it takes place and the disparate effect that that might have is different. So, I'd like to know the time of use that went with that pattern versus the use you just referenced, because that's the true comparison as to what might be the concerns that Ms. Henley is referring to.
We can provide the analysis that has been given.
Thank you very much.
Shannon.
And piggybacking on Barbara, and the person that spoke in opposition to that, we've, I've been contacted by her, I'm assuming others have as well. Just for the record, we did do our notices in the 30-day time, and we did all of that by the book. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And there is definitely not going to be outdoor entertainment, as your slide stated.
Yes, that's part of the zoning ordinance, and planning commission also recommended a condition be added, and that has been added.
And what about the neighboring communities? I know she mentioned something about Barry said he talked to 22 neighbors, but there were more. What was that like as far as the outreach to the neighborhood?
So, the 22 that was referred to is the adjacent property notifications that went out to the adjacent property owners. As far as individual outreach, I am unsure what the applicant has done to go out, and to be honest, I'm not sure any has been done. But we have, the signs have been posted, the notifications have been sent out, and it's been advertised as required at this point in time.
And Ms. Henley has a follow-up?
When we were getting a future look at some potential road improvements, I think maybe our six-year plan or something, one that I thought was fantastic, but it's not funded yet, was a reconfiguration of this intersection with Oceana Boulevard meeting General Booth. Does everybody else remember that?
Yeah.
How much improved it looked? When do we really think that might occur? This is such a terrible intersection.
So, Ms. Henley, we briefed you on that as a submission for the Smart Scale project, and so, that is in deliberation at this time, and hopefully, we'll be notified of those results.
It wasn't a terrifically expensive...
No, it was not.
...project. I mean, I would hope that that would be something, if we don't make the Smart Scale cut, that we could try to work on, because that is...
Add it to the list.
Yeah, Jess.
Which side on that strip mall? Is it on the side closest to the neighborhood, or the side closest to Oceana?
It's located in this unit right here.
Okay. So, it's not technically next to residential.
No, the property is...
The strip is, but they're not.
Yeah.
It's beside the core, beside the sushi restaurant?
It's going to be located right in this unit, so I think it's in...
The site of a former establishment.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay. All right. Next, this is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance brought forth by Councilman Jones. Currently, the city requires a fence permit for any new fencing or fence repairs within 30 feet of the public right-of-way, or any fence required to enclose a swimming pool. This amendment would require a fence permit for any new fence or repairs to an existing fence which are 50% or more. A fence permit will continue to be required for any fencing that encloses a pool. Staff is unaware of any opposition to this request.
Can I ask why we're updating that?
What was the question?
Ask me why we're updating it.
The rationale for it.
I've had two different complaints from citizens about this particular issue, and it's what we have is people are building fences on other people's property.
Oh, okay.
And then leaving it there, and then refusing to remove them. And so the idea is to prevent that from occurring.
I see. Gotcha.
But also, I hear correctly, if someone's just replacing a part of their fence, they would not be required to get a permit.
Under 50%.
Correct. Just like if you replace more than 250 square feet of your driveway, you don't have to go to Chesapeake Bay Board.
Correct.
Just in case anyone's listening, you can incrementally repair your driveway over time.
That's correct. All right, this is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance that will align the zoning ordinance with regulations passed by the General Assembly in July 2018 regarding communication towers. This will lessen city regulations and permitting requirements for communication towers. Changes include not requiring any landscaping, remove the 125% of the height of the tower setback requirement. We will no longer require balloon tests or visibility maps, and no longer required, the applicant will no longer be required to inform the planning department of contact with the surrounding properties. And again, to underscore, this is to reflect the new state regulations and to align our zoning ordinance with that.
That's the state doing it, not us, huh?
Welcome to the Dylan era.
All right, and next we'll be going to our deferred items. So you had two items that were deferred at your November 20th hearing. First one is a request for a bulk storage yard to store slabs of granite pieces within the existing parking lot in front of the building. As we stated, this was deferred at your November 20th meeting in order to provide the applicant additional time to meet with representatives of the Property Owners Association. Even with the proposed storage of material in the parking lot, there is sufficient parking on the property. Deviations were requested to the required Category 6 landscaping requirement, and the applicant intends on fencing the area, but desires to replace the shrubs that would be required adjacent to the fence up along the right-of-way in front of the stormwater management facility. So staff did support this deviation. There is opposition to this request from the Property Owners Association, as their bylaws prohibit outdoor storage of material. Plan Commission did vote 9 to 0 to recommend approval.
Yeah, Mr. Wood?
So if their Property Owners Association prohibits it, then why are we doing this?
The zoning ordinance does permit it, and we typically do not get involved with private matters in regards to homeowners' associations and their bylaws.
I've got a question on that, Bob. When this was originally rezoned, assuming it wasn't in 1963 zone for what it was, was one of the conditions of one of the things proffered in the verbatim that they were going to have any homeowner or association things, was that all, was that in the narrative and part of the discussion when the council approved the rezoning to start with?
I'm unsure, but we can look into that and get you the answer on that.
Have a material bearing on how you would approach this property.
From what I understand, when Mrs. Chapel sold or gave up the land and they built the Commerce Park, these, the bylaws, if you will, were put into place as an association. At the planning hearing, they were basically told, we can rule on this. Planning asked the same question, why are we ruling on this when the Property Owners Association can go ahead and overturn it anyways, because it's their rule? And speaking with the realtor for the property, it's not the applicant, he, you know, he mentioned to me, no one really wants to incur the legal fees to do that. If we could stop it ahead of time, so there's no legal fee that are being incurred to fight it later, would be the way we want to go. So we deferred it till December so that they could come and see if they could come up with a solution that makes it attractive, and no one has to hire attorneys and pay any money out of pocket.
Right, got that. But I got that too, but my point is if and when it was originally, when this was done, that was part of the consideration for making the rezoning, was that bylaw piece, then I would be, then I don't look like I'm getting in between two private parties. I'm getting behind and supporting the rationale for the decision when it was originally rezoned, and I, then I feel like we're protecting the public equity versus taking sides. And now that's where I was coming from. I don't want to get in between two people, not in the litigation business, but I am in the, if we have a public equity, I want to protect a business.
Sure. Good point.
And these people own the building, and so it's only going to be a two-to-seven-year, did you know all that? The two-to-seven-year conditional use, because once the applicant, apparently, once the tenant that's in the building moves out, then it will go away. The conditional use will go away at that point, and they would have to reapply again.
But they knew when they leased the building that these conditions were in place?
Well, no, they were, they were in the building as a lessee, and Coastal Hospitality or something had their lending business there, and they owned it, and they decided to sell the building. And when they sold it to these people, they, these tenants came along with it. So they, but they've been storing their granite outside since they've been there. They're just deciding they needed to play by the rules, and so when they bought the building, they decided to level up and make sure everything was by the bulk, and this is how they're, this is how they've gotten to where they are.
Thanks, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Excellent. All right.
Did say all that correctly, didn't I? Okay.
All right, final item for tonight. This item was also deferred at your November 20th meeting. This is a request to modify the proffers and conditions associated with a 2015 approval to construct a bulk storage yard to store RVs and commercial equipment. As we said, access was to be provided via ingress egress off of London Bridge Rover via Castleton Commerce Way. Since the approval, they've run into issues in regards to their access, the proposed ingress egress access, and they are now proposing to access the site off of Dam Neck Road through an existing curb cut and via an ingress egress easement across the adjacent parcel to the east. In addition to changing the access, they also have requested changing conditions, limiting the height, which currently is limited to six feet, to be permitted to store containers up to 10 feet, and to request the change of the condition prohibiting generators to be modified to allow generators within vehicles such as ice cream trucks. Four speakers did appear at the planning commission public hearing and stated concerns regarding screening of the storage yard to the adjacent neighborhood, noise and tree removal, and stormwater drainage. Plan Commission did vote 9 to 0 to recommend approval, and as we said before, it is likely the opposition will show for this request.
Yeah, Ms. Henley?
I know they did mention drainage, and I hope we are checking with that, because that isn't one of these conditions. But now the conditions, as it came to us last week, doesn't have any, it took out all of the limits, but this says change it from six feet to 10 feet. So I think that needs to be made certain. I know that the neighbors are going to want to know what that is, but this goes to the whole thing of conditions. And, you know, we've talked about conditions a lot with short-term rentals, and it's just really concerning when we have conditions that don't get enforced. And I know that these people over in that neighborhood have had a very bad experience with the storage facility that's been there for years, and I think that's why they have such an aversion to any kind of storage facility, because, and I think that one has now changed hands and maybe get better, but because they had such a terrible time with that other one, they don't want a storage yard, period. And I think that, you know, when we have conditions and they're not enforced, that's just not right. Within this one, of course, is the ingress and egress, and it's going to be the height limitations, and if there's going to be a limitation, it needs to be in here. And I think we have to make certain that our conditions are very plain and very simple and very enforceable. Or, you know, in talking with these neighbors between now and the date that it comes to us, we're going to have to satisfy folks that, you know, it's going to be done right, and that's going to be an uphill battle, I think. But they don't want to see what's over there. Now, I think that there's that big area there that's going to be treed. I know there's a big berm there, and I noticed that they have the condition about lights, which is very important. "All outdoor lighting shall be shielded to direct light and glare onto the premises. Said lighting and glare shall be deflected, shaded, and focused away from adjoining property. Any outdoor lighting fixtures shall not be erected any higher than 14 feet." All of these things are going to be really important to these neighbors. Now, what are we going to tell these neighbors to assure them that whatever these conditions are that we put in there, that they're going to be enforced?
I will... Well, as I said, you know, the conditions are enforceable by zoning.
But are we going to enforce it?
I'll let my zoning administrator address that specifically.
Is that 10 feet, not 8 feet like it was originally?
Yeah, everybody knows.
What the...
The height of the...
The height of the shipping containers. Well, what seems to be the problem is that containers don't come in a six-foot height.
Right.
And I don't know, but these neighbors are very, you know, they don't want to see any part of it, and they want to make sure that everything is shielded. I really haven't talked with them since last week, but I've got a feeling we're going to be doing a lot of talking over the next week or two. So how are we going to address this?
Oh.
Hi, Kevin.
Well, to give you a little, you're absolutely correct that the neighbors are wary because of the storage facility that's there. The new company that bought that, Prime Storage, we've worked with them in the Fire Marshal's Office pretty diligently over the past year and a half. They have evicted 31 illegal businesses to date, and we've done, cleaned up most of it. There's still a complaint here or there, but I think that's in better shape. They got the landscaping deficiency planted last week or two weeks ago. So hopefully, our good-faith effort bringing that more into compliance will help the neighbors' faith in it. We can just, the nice thing about enforcement of this and this conditions is knowing the problems that we've had in this area as we go through the whole site plan review process, and when it comes in, we can put a lot of scrutiny in that review to ensure it. Now, the enforceable conditions, when you give a height of 10 feet, 14-foot light, you know, directed away, those are very enforceable conditions. You know, they don't have that vagueness where we get into that gray area, so I agree with you. The way these conditions are written, I'm confident that, you know, we can enforce this effectively.
Can we ask for a 10-foot fence or put the fence on the berm so that it is raised higher than these 10-foot trailers?
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, that's going to satisfy them. That's one of the biggest things, because the guy that I talked to is the one that is the most effective. He's backed right up to that, and that's the request, is can we at least raise the fence to cover the substance of the subjects?
So he's here in these lots?
He is the one that is the most effective, backed right up to it.
Yes, and he's kind of taken the charge of the entire neighborhood as far as their view on the storage yard. Another thing I will add, as far as their negative view towards this development, is that when this first went through, nothing was ever done. The berm was done, and a permit was pulled for agricultural, just to build a berm. The berm was built, but then the use permit never moved forward. So it kind of sat there, it got overgrown, and the neighbors were sitting there saying, well, what gives? Why haven't you done anything you said? It's because that use permit was never put into place, and now it's under different ownership.
Jeff, John?
One question, observation of another enforcement issue that gets to the heart of this handling, and I'm sure you know what I'm going to talk about. But on, since Dam Neck Road is a limited-access road, when we say the alternative egress, what's happening relative to the length of turn lanes and other things, such that the de-acceleration isn't happening on the principal limited-access highway, but in fact is happening? Because that's a degradation of existing public equity that we're doing, and our, that's, we're going to make sure that all the de-acceleration takes place...
Yep.
...off the main two roads, correct?
Absolutely. As it is a limited-access roadway, under no circumstance would we permit another curb cut. This is an existing curb cut with a right-turn lane. If that right-turn lane needs to be extended, that will be reviewed and part of the site plan development.
Now, what about observation about enforcement, and what it takes and what frustrates people about it? We all know that the Walmart came in and asked for a conditional use permit to park at different Walmarts. You may recall and have permanent things there. I didn't vote for that, because I've experienced their... Well, they didn't ask for it at Town Center, but this is what they do. They park up all these trailers, tractor-trailer things, block the passageways, take up parking spaces, then you go in, this has been annual, this is like the fifth year I've dealt with this issue, I believe. I'm sure someone could nod on that. We go out and give them a notice, they get so many days to fix it, and meanwhile, that's... And so they're not being good neighbors. And that gets to the heart of, when you say you are going to enforce it, how long it takes and the persistence that it takes. I'm going to write a letter to the CEO of Walmart and share with him the good neighbors there not being and consistent non-compliance, but this is a constant mess, and that's, who'd want that? You know, and they know at other places they couldn't do it, so they came in and asked. They knew we probably wouldn't approve it in Town Center, so they just do it anyway, and it sits there for a week. So, and I know people drive by and see these things, so I'm really asking is, when you see this stuff, people around this table shouldn't have to call to point this out. This is a very visible location, and I hope we're sending a message that, you know, you can't keep doing these type of things.
Yes. Yes, and then just to note, in the zoning district, that that Walmart's located in, bulk storage isn't even a, they couldn't even get a use permit. It's a prohibited use, so...
I wonder they didn't ask?
Yes, we hand-delivered a notice to the store manager.
Good point, all you've done, we just got to get away with it.
We're on it.
All righty.
Anybody else, Ms. Henley?
We have another one we have to talk about. And there was another issue that was on the planning commission agenda, and when it didn't get advertised in the Beacon, and I didn't see it, and then the applicants, the neighbors didn't see it, they called me yesterday, and that's the modification of conditions for the Pine Grove Church. And it was heard, and I asked poor Jimmy this morning, I wasn't happy, why isn't on the December agenda? And I'm told that the applicant asked to have it not heard until January. Now, we don't do that. I mean, we've got a longstanding policy that if somebody's going to expedite, you know, it's with the district representatives' approval, but I've never had anybody ask to not have it heard. And, you know, for it not to be advertised, for the neighbors not to be notified, for me not to be notified, and now it's not going to be heard until January bothers me. And this is one we absolutely hate to even have to hear, because talk about good neighbors. There's no reason that this hasn't been settled anyway. But now I've got to explain to the community why this one is not being heard in December, and what's going to happen in the meantime.
Is it really too late?
It, well, it wouldn't.
It's too late.
It's not advertised.
Are you going to tell you a lot if we couldn't make it?
Help me out here, guys.
That, I am sorry.
No, they've already been advertised, but I'm sorry, Jimmy didn't exactly have all the information.
What, already been advertised, isn't the same answer as saying, if we're willing to spend additional money, can we still make the advertising threshold? Those are two different questions.
No, the time has surpassed where we can't beat the legal obligations.
Okay, very good. Just making sure, those are two different questions.
So, as you can imagine, the church leadership and membership was very disappointed that they did not receive a positive recommendation. And the pastor, he didn't ask, he said, I want to get my congregation involved, I want to get with the consultant, because a lot of questions about the lighting and how it would be worked and everything else, and for those reasons, and he's very busy with his church at this time, with Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays, I allowed it to be done in January.
Well...
Which is not unusual.
One thing that I have asked, and I've been asking for a year, or we wouldn't even be here, is that we can have a meeting with the pastor and the neighbors and me. There's no reason in the world why these conditions cannot be just settled. But talk about conditions, and I made an motion, and I've got the transcript where I specifically said, it's because of these conditions that I'm willing to make the motion to approve this. But these conditions are not approved, are not followed. This is what it looked like two years ago. When I went out there and I saw that parking lot, I just was speechless, and it's gone downhill from there. I believe the neighbors actually came and spoke to us in an open mic night, I think it was last... But they're only asking for one change condition. And I don't know how this thing got built without this condition being approved. All lighting on the site shall be directed downward and not spill over onto adjoining residential lots. Very common, we put on all of these. But then it goes on to say, all parking lot lighting shall be on motion sensors at night when the church is not in use. Lighting on the front and rear of the church building may remain on for security purposes but will be shielded from residential neighbors. That's pretty plain. But when I went out and looked at this the first time I got called, you know, not only is this parking lot elevated to the point that the city paid for a mighty high fence to go up there, but these, these poles are, I think, 18 feet tall. Not a one of them had a shield and it looked like a football field at night. The shields that are on there now, I think the city has paid to put the shields on. I mean, we've done everything.
We did, we did not.
He, he actually paid for them, but we had to press them pretty hard to get them in.
But this is the condition, we put on everything, that when there's a parking lot next to a neighborhood, we always say that the lighting shall be shielded, it should be down, which shall not spill over. And there's no reason why this has been going on for a year. And then, of course, other ones are not, not enforced either. But when we approve something and we think we're doing the right thing because we've got conditions on there that are going to make it agreeable, and then the conditions are not followed, and I just don't know how the whole thing got built without following these conditions. Not only are they not being enforced, but I don't know how it got approved to be built like this. I've really kind of lost faith in our conditions because they don't get approved. And then, all in the world we've got to do is have good neighbors get along and not insist on having lights kept on all night or even until 10 o'clock at night if there's not a car in the parking lot. It just takes good neighbors. And I don't know why we just can't sit down and talk through this thing and, and get it worked out. And we won't have to be paying consultants and everything else. I've, I've, I've been asking for a meeting with the pastor and the, and the neighbors with me for a year and it hasn't happened. And I want that to happen quick. And I've got Christmas coming too, but I'll find time in there to do it. But now we've got to tell the neighbors that it's not going to be heard in December, it's going to be what, mid-January before it's even heard?
January 15.
And I, I really have a problem with it.
Ms. Henley, we can make the request. We have made the request in the past. I don't see how we can enforce a, a church to meet with the public.
Well, I don't.
I mean, so we have made the request and agreed to facilitate those meetings. So the fact that they didn't have them is by choice.
I want the transcript of the planning commission in the packet by this Friday, please.
Okay. No problem.
This has been a nightmare for over a year now for me as well as for the, the neighbors. And it shouldn't be. It just shouldn't be. And I know we've been going round and round with the, the other conditions that are not met either. And like I say, when we put conditions on things and we approve something based on the conditions and, and then they're not followed, and let me see, I said, I won't go through all of these conditions. Some of these were added by the community in the last few days to make it more palatable if we can. So the council all has copies of this with these proposed conditions. That's why we've gone through all these conditions because we really feel that with these conditions, the church can be a compatible use with the neighborhood. And I'm sure the church is going to do everything they can do to do the very best job they can do. And with all that confidence, I will move that we approve it with these conditions. That was my motion and here is it.
Yeah, John?
Well, I would like the city attorney, if he could, and it would be privileged communication, I would like to know what the legal strategy and avenues are available in the event that we can't come to an amicable, as you call it, neighborly solution. How do we come to a coercive solution to enforce the terms that we adopted and what's the legal strategy to do that? I'd like to have that in writing if we could, please.
Take it to court?
I just want to understand what it takes.
Right.
I mean, it's going to be unpleasant for everybody. And I don't want this, nobody wants this.
I saw the planning commission meeting, it was difficult.
Well, I, I would love to have us avoid unpleasant trees.
I, I think your idea of a pre-meeting, maybe that could solve a lot of this rather than having it all done like the planning commission.
I'm ready. And I, I just really think there's no good reason why this can't be just worked out agreeably. It's not my idea to bring something so controversial.
I'm not taking that bet.
I've done everything I can to avoid it.
Barry, if you can move forward and try to do your best to broker a meeting.
Sure.
If I could help out in any way, let me know.
We'll be glad to. We have done it many times, just haven't gotten the meeting together. At the risk of a career, another career-shortening comment, I.
You already got that anywhere, retirement.
Just to be clear on the lights, there is, we have very clear documentation of the alignment, the, the pointing of the lights, the adjustments of the lights. So there is no foot candles on the adjacent properties. The misunderstanding or the confusion is you can still see the lights. So the direct, the lights are directed downward, they are either turned or shielded downwards. And we have two in the field tests that we did to that. It still is an impact to the neighbors, but it meets, in my opinion, the intention of the requirements, that they are directed downward, they are shielded. Anytime there was one that was over the, not even over the prop line, over the curb, it was adjusted to make sure that that light did not spill over.
Well, I've been in the house and seen the reflection across the walls. And so I know, well, maybe you all have done some work since I was in the house. But I mean, it clearly says that, that would be on sensors so that if there are no cars in the parking lot, the lights are going to be off.
The light.
If there are no cars in the parking lot, except right around the church, maybe there's a small meeting, but that's a mighty big parking lot.
All right, again.
The intent was that the lights would be, that was my intent.
That was your intent. The condition says that the lights will be off when the church is not in use. And the pastor has adamantly said that they're off.
Well, I'm not.
That's not what it says?
No.
Okay, well, then I'm wrong.
It might be short, but I think I can get this straight.
Okay, all right.
Quote, "All parking for lighting shall be on motion sensors at night when the church is not in use."
When the church is not in use.
So by the weather at midnight and there's no, those lights should be off.
They are off.
By the weather tonight, the lights are off in the parking.
They are off.
Well, if the light, if the church is in use, that means two people are there.
The motion sets it off, then.
So, so I guess our interpretation is.
A reason for the whole parking lot to be lighted.
The lights are on when the church is in use.
But are the lights have sensors?
No, they do not.
But does this not say sensors?
It says when.
That's what it does say.
What does it say?
Says all parking for lighting shall be on motion sensors.
When the church is not in use. And they are not. You are correct. But the lights are off when the church is not in use.
Are you trying to help the neighbors or trying to, you know?
I'm just.
I'll, I'll rely on the city attorney. I think I have more success.
But unfortunately, we weren't plain enough to say, but it says that, that lighting on the front and rear, so, you know, I know, you know, we know churches. Sometimes there's just a little committee meeting and there are three cars there. Well, you don't need this great big parking lot to be all lighted if there are three cars there. I mean, I think our intent was, you know, if there's a service and, and, you know, you need all those parked, then it, then it can be lighted, but we weren't plain enough. But there's no reason to light the entire parking lot if there's just a choir practice or something, you know?
I.
We weren't specific enough.
Yeah, I think at this point, we just have to move forward and establish effective communication with these folks. We got to bring them to the table and let's get this resolved in a win-win fashion. I know there, there's, might, there might be some obstacles there, but let's proceed accordingly to rectify the situation. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
One more question while, while you're here. After I, I became aware of this, we had a proposed ordinance for when commercial parking lots abut residential. And having had this experience, I asked questions and we deferred action on that, but it's never come back to us. Did we give up on having parking lots, commercial parking lots, adjoining residential?
Go ahead. Be my guest.
No, we, we have contracted out with the electrical company. We have, through Public Works, yes, Pace. And they have submitted to us a draft ordinance. We are probably three days from completing our review, getting our comments back, and then having a review with the city attorney to move this ordinance forward. So we're well on our way to establishing a much more detailed lighting ordinance that takes some of this vagueness of, you know, shall be directed away, shall not glare. Well, this is going to give specific measurements, how we measure it based on the industry standards.
I wish you picked another lighting consultant because I don't have any confidence in this one now.
Okay. Yeah, Rosemary.
Some of you, and I know John has, have heard, you know, concerns about the Francis Land House and what plans might be for, for the future. And Dave and I spoke yesterday and I, I think this is where we're headed at this point in time. And I talked to also the president of the Friends of the Historic Houses today and he liked this idea as well. On December 8th, which is a Saturday, there's going to be an open house at the Francis Land House. The foundation, the Historic Houses Foundation is going to be there and they're going to have boards and throughout the house to display what their ideas are and for people, it's going to be advertised and for people to can come and go and can see what, what is it they want to do and have their questions answered and that sort of thing. But afterwards, which I think is equally as important, is to have a follow-up meeting so that after everybody has seen what plans they're, they've been talking about, that with this follow-up meeting, then they can raise any other concerns and that sort of thing to, to, you know, sort of flesh it all out again. Because there's a lot of groups who've been, they've been hearing things, but they didn't really know what they were hearing. And this whole, communication is a really important thing. So Dave and I talked about it yesterday. We thought this was a good path to go on. And like I said, I talked to Rick Klobuchar earlier today and he really liked this pathway. So we'll do this before Christmas and I would think that the follow-up meeting though will be after the holidays.
Thank you, Rosemary, for taking leadership on that. I appreciate it.
No, that, that's outstanding. Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order? Thank you all for your participation.
Rocket, don't.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.